Okay, we're going to begin our workshop and we're going to start with over the counter medication.
As Ms. Alagret approaches the podium, I had previously passed out two things to you. The first one was a basically a package of the laws, our policies, our school health plan, a couple of the resources the district uses in regards to their use of medications. And I had tried to highlight in yellow and red and make it somewhat easy to follow. And I can briefly run through this for you if you would like.
I wish because we haven't seen this before, wasn't in our packet.
No, no. No, I gave it to you this morning.
I know that, but you know what? You were busy.
This morning?
Just to get everybody else talking, yes. So can you?
It's relatively easy.
Okay.
So basically Florida statute 1000 and 6.062 is the statutory authority that allows us to operate a clinic in the schools. It's if you look at sub paragraph one, it says notwithstanding the provisions of the Practice Act, which is it allows district personnel to be able to give out prescribed medication, but they're going to be under the management or the control of a nurse as far as their training goes and as far as how they are supposed to operate it. And that allows our district personnel in order to be able to pass out the prescription medications, otherwise you would not be allowed to.
What is notwithstanding? What does that word mean?
Because the Nurse Practices Act talks about the nurses being able to hand out prescription medicine. And instead of having a nurse in every school that hand out prescription medicine, notwithstanding that act, if we adopt district school board can assist with that as long as we follow the provisions of this statute so that you don't have to have a nurse standing in every clinic. It allows them to be, A, to be trained and to be able to do this. So that's how it gets around the Nurse Practice Act. In A and B, it tells what the school district has to do in order to dispense prescribed medicine. And then I highlighted paragraph two, which is big in the sense that if you follow 1000 and 6.062 and operate accordingly, then there's no liability or civil damages for the administration of the medication when they're doing it according to the statute. The next thing that is contained in your package is our policy 5.62, which says that all guidelines and procedures set forth in the School Health Service Plan and the School Health Procedure Informs Manual shall be followed when administering any type of medication. So that is the policy that you've implemented. We see that it was adopted in '04 and revised in '06, so it's been there quite a while. You have some administrative guidelines that go along with that. I think the part that we are here today on will be contained on page two, sub paragraph or excuse me, section three, when it talks about non-prescription medicine. And it says, "The law regarding administration of medicine in the school applies only to prescribed medicine," which is the first statute that I gave to you. "The policy concerning non-prescription medicines over the counter should be made by the district in cooperation with the DOE." And it goes on to say, "Non-prescription and over the counter drugs have the potential for serious side effects, and it suggested that policies and procedures for the administration of non-prescription medication be in the same or similar as those for prescribed medication."
It suggests by whom? By us?
Yes, because the actual statute really covers prescribed medicine.
Only?
Correct.
Only. And what, does the Nurse Practitioners Act only address medication prescribed?
The Nurse Practitioners Act is in the last.
Well, I wanted to jump ahead, Matt.
That's fine, but the Nurse Practitioners Act says that the administration of medications and treatments, it allows, it is at the end, it is par, is Florida statute 464.003, which talks about regulation of the profession. And the easiest thing that is on page three of three on the bottom, sub paragraph 20, "The practice of professional nursing means the performance of these acts require substantial knowledge, skills, everything else." And then it goes subsection B, it says, "The administration of medications and treatment as prescribed or authorized by a duly licensed practitioner authorized by the laws of the state of Florida." And I can let somebody else speak to this, but the problem that you run into is that your over the counter medicines that you are allowed to go and purchase without a prescription are still a medicine as defined by the Food and Drug Administration.
Is it defined as a medicine by the Nurse Practitioners Act?
It is, because they are only allowed to issue medication with a doctor's prescription or at the direction of a physician or a DOE or somebody who's authorized to do so.
But they're authorized to prescribe medicine. If it's a non-prescribed medicine, a non-prescribed substance, then how does that say that you have to have the authorization of someone who is authorized to prescribe when the prescription is not needed? I don't understand that connection.
I don't believe that, and Pam, you can come and speak to this, but it's the same as being in a hospital and you say, "I need an aspirin." They're not going to go get you an aspirin and bring it to you without going to the doctor and getting the doctor's permission or a prescription to provide you with that aspirin.
I would say that being in a hospital is different than being in a classroom, because you're in a hospital, you are 100% under doctor's care and doctor's orders while you're in that facility. You're not there for something else. You're not there for lunch.
I understand that, but I mean, you can speak to this, but I mean, you are not, as a nurse, allowed to hand out over the counter medicine without a doctor's prescription. Is that correct?
Correct. My understanding, being a nurse for 20 years, is I cannot give out any medication, whether it's prescription or non-prescription. I don't have that in my training to be able to do that. So all of the health room attendants and the nurses are working under a nurse's license. And when I read this Florida statute for the Nurse Practice Act, I read it as, in order to give out a medication, that it has to be coming from a doctor to tell me what to do, because you're not trained.
I understand that, but how are we defining medication? That's my question here. Are we overdefining medication as anything that can be bought in a drugstore setting, per se, as opposed to a medication that was specifically prescribed by a physician? And I understand that, appreciate the prescription aspect of it, but for things that are simple, over the counter, anything? I mean, why are we saying sunscreen? Because it's approved by FDA? Some are, some blue dyeing off them approved by FDA. We don't have to have a dietitian approve them, eat them.
Well, the Florida Administrative Health Guidelines that we go by, they're made between the Department of Health and the Department of Education, actually has a paragraph, and I believe it's in this.
It's in that package.
On sunscreen. They recommend that you treat that as an over the counter. I'm assuming because of all the different medic, well, different ingredients in there, some of which can be defined as like a medication like Zantoxogge or.
And just a question, it's not a judgment. So I just want to make sure I state it that way. Why do we adhere to the guidelines as our, and what instrument within our policy dictates them from guidelines to policy?
Well, I believe that our.
And again, I don't, I'm just trying to understand that.
As I have been since I started here, but I believe in our policy states that we follow the administrative guidelines. However, the guidelines state that each local school district can make your own policy. They don't have to follow those guidelines, but what I understand is our policy says we follow them.
And so, Mr. Bradshaw, if for some reason we didn't, if for some reason we took that out of our policy, what does that do?
Right now, if you'll look, if we continue through this.
Sure, okay.
Because it may make sense, our next policy was student medications, is 5.621, which is.
What page?
I didn't know these pages, I'm sorry.
Ms. Powers.
But it's our policy that just basically goes over the fact that inhalers, EpiPens, diabetic medicines and.
It's about halfway through.
Enzyme supplements are allowed to be carried into him, how that works. The next page comes out of the School Health Manual, the Medication Administration, the part on Medicine Administration as far as Training Manual. And the portion that I highlighted is our School Health Manual states that we recognize that over the counter and prescribed medicines may be both given at school, but that over the counter medication are handled just as those that are prescribed, the two essential requirements, parent permission and a healthcare provider authorization apply both to OTCs and prescribed meds or.
Just for a question again, where did that page come out of? The six dash two.
It's out of our School Health Manual.
Which comes out of the Florida School Health Administrative Guidelines.
Right. But that's again, now where have we adopted that? The manual is adopted then as a policy?
No.
In our district?
The manual is not a policy.
It's still a guideline.
It is still a guideline that we take from the Florida School Health Administrative Guidelines, which was developed between the DOE and the DOH for school health.
Okay.
I think everybody's received.
I would disagree with that, because your School Health Service Plan and your School Health Procedure Inform manuals are a policy, because 5.62 says that all guidelines and procedures is set forth in those two, in the School Health Service Plan and the School Health Procedure Inform manuals, shall be followed when administering any type of medications to students. So you adopted those by your policy and it's being policy.
That was what I was, and I wondered if that was.
And I apologize in some manias, I thought you meant that this policy informs manual came before you to approve.
No, that part, that language would have come before us.
Right, just like this School Health Services Plan that I brought to you about a month ago, you approved. That's the other part of the document.
I'm sure everybody's received phone calls on this topic of discussion. And since Pam is so new, we haven't had any heated conversations, but Ms. Alagret and I have had several heated conversations face to face and on the phone, but.
With each other or with other people?
Well, with each other. And I would say she's a little more calm than I am. But I think the purpose of today, if the board knows they can disagree, I think we need to find out what we can change, what the board has the flexibility to change. Because I don't like stand up front and look at every time they can't bring cough drops to school. And I, you know, and Chapstick, we pick on Chapstick, because there's thousands of brands, some have medication in them, some of them don't. And all due respect to rules and policies and all, I think everything can be looked at, with a little common sense in there, where, because I do think that there's angst out in the public on our parents, you know, what happened if my child brings Chapstick or cough drops? Because, you know, if they break a rule, kids get disciplined, and we also know that that won't necessarily always happen. So I think that's my purpose today, and hopefully that's the board's purpose, is that we can find what we can change in policy to make this where we can live with it, the district we don't cause hours and hours of paperwork and everything else that our administrators really don't have time to do. Ms. Bryant?
And in the same vein, I think sunscreen is so important.
Amen.
At the Academy of Environmental Science, our children are out there, they're in the water, they need to reapply it.
Part of what I gave to you also was a, a release of liability and for the use of sunscreen, it's for specific events, but then I also, last week when I was speaking with Ms. Alagret, as far as doing one for those reoccurring events, like when you're at the academy, because you're in and out all of the time, but otherwise it is designed for, you know, for wet field day, for, you know, whatever type of thing. When you're, you know, when you go to the marine science station on the boat trip, we certainly want our students to be able to use sunscreen in general things.
For activities.
Excuse me?
Athletics.
Athletics, right. You know, you're a kid that is in the band, that goes out there and stands in the sun from 3:00 until 6:00 at night, you know, you want to make sure that they're able to protect themselves.
There's something to.
Absolutely.
Why do we have to specify, why can't we just allow kids to have sunscreen?
My understanding is considered a medicine.
By who?
By the FDA.
Well, all right, why does the FDA tell us, just because they have to approve it through their process, that that automatically rises to the level of equivalent to a prescription drug? That's where I think we're, maybe we're making too many a leap here.
I don't think that it rises to the level of prescription drug. The problem that you have is that you get an immunity from liability by when you treat them as prescribed medicines. So it's an insulation to the school district, if you have a prescription and the use thereof, then it protects us from liability. Also, I'm still trying to wrap.
Have we ever had someone getting sick of a sunscreen overdose?
Well, but it goes back to what's the purpose of today. Have you drafted a policy that we can look at that will help release us of liability and yet give us some common sense usage of Chapstick, sunscreen, cough drops?
I drafted a release as far as the sunscreen is concerned. I revamped an entire policy, you know, because I need some correction from the board.
But we can do, here is a release, so we can insert a release.
Here's the potential problems that I see, all right? I understand the need to want to have, you know, certain over the counter items allowing students to have, but, you know, that range is from, you know, medicated Chapstick, make it silly on one side, all the way up through, you know, your Nyquil, Daywell, your, you know, cold sore medicines on the other. And where does that board want to draw this line? So if you're going to allow students to carry certain things on their person, then that needs to be defined, okay? Obviously, non-medicated stuff is not an issue. So, you know, a non-medicated lip balm is no different than a, you know, a boy using that is no different than a girl using lipstick, so because it doesn't have the ingredient in it. So that's, you know, obviously not an issue. But, you know, where do you draw the line as far as if it's medicated cough drops? You know, and do you allow students to have certain medicines on them and self-administer them? Because that's contrary to your code of conduct, it's contrary to your other policies, you're going to need to revamp all of those. You know, if you say, "We're going to allow with parent permission to be placed into the clinic," then, you know, the clinic aide might not be able to distribute it because they're working under the auspices of a nurse, and the nurse can't allow that because it doesn't have a doctor's prescription. So if you don't let the clinic aide do it, then you're going to have to designate somebody else at a school and give them that responsibility, and then that's going to fall outside of the statute that gives you immunity, you know, as far as liability is concerned if it's done. So it's all a risk reward factor, you know, you need to know what the risk here and decide if that's a risk that you.
So, Mr. Bradshaw, if this board though said, you know what, we will take non-medicated Chapstick, non-medicated Life Savers, and we listed four or five items that we believed had some common sense to it, and we said, I guess the question is, we're willing to take the risk on those. What is our risk on something happening?
Non-medicated is non-medicated, so there is no risk.
Well, but right now, if they had, and we included sunscreen, and sunscreen and hand lotion, for example, which are, that do fall under FDA. Well, and I said, that's why I said non-medicated, because if it had an alcohol content in it, then we'd get it too. So if we listed those things, and let's say one of those things could be argued, they fall into FDA oversight, and we accepted the risk.
I guess.
What now, okay, what is our, I mean, what is the realistic of us being sued and what is our exposure then?
I guess that's going to depend on when you say, "We're going to accept the risk and allow it," is that allowing them just to have that on them, or they need to have a bring a parental note and just give it to them?
Well, let's say we just let them have, they are allowed to have it on them.
We're not prohibiting.
We're not prohibiting. Those are not on a prohibited list.
I mean, if they bring it to school, they bring it to school, just like they probably already have it in their pocket now.
But so, okay, so they use it though. Now, what is, because we're still kind of, I think the problem that maybe some of us are facing is, okay, so we let them do it, what happens now?
I think, besides the fact that you're not controlling what's coming onto your campus as tightly, I mean, if there's no difference now than there would be.
Do you mean with us or the student?
If the student now overdoses on sunscreen, or let's say realistically, they irritate their eye, they irritate their eye, they get sunscreen on, maybe it's, instead of this document, they're in elementary and they splash too much on their eye, or maybe worse, they put, they let another kid have their sunscreen, and they put it on, and they get it in their eye. Do we now have a liability?
I think you do, you know, in those situations, because if you know that they have that and you're not regulating it and it hurts another child, I mean, you could have, you could face a potential liability. I don't know, I can't tell you how great that would be.
But what if we didn't know Tom brought it, Thomas brought it, and he gave it to Pat? And we didn't know he had it in his pocket.
We have the same rule that, you know, don't bring marijuana, but don't bring marijuana and then give it to another student as well.
Yeah, but if you say, "We're going to allow each of you to bring sunscreen to school and keep it on, you know, we don't even know about it," I guess you'd have to say that's still going to be a code of conduct violation, which is, in the release I drafted, those things are in there. So.
Well, here's, here's the thing, this is, I think, I don't know where you got this from, the questions and answers?
Uh huh.
Is this page 19, at the bottom, should non-prescription over the counter medications be allowed at all? This is what concerns me. Unrestricted use of non-prescription medicines, blah, 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 can lead to an atmosphere that can escalate into illegal drug use. Really? I can bring sunscreen, so I guess I'll just bring my marijuana with me too, because I don't care. I mean, I mean, that's absurd.
That's for the medication use in schools, research.
That's absurd, that's an absurd notation, and that's where we get into these fear mongering and get into these ridiculous policies because of statements like that.
Chapstick today, marijuana tomorrow.
Exactly. It's a gateway drug.
But you have something for us so that we can agree on it and get at least part of this resolved today as far as sunscreen can be utilized by students in the classroom without repercussion.
Well, I provided you a release, because that was the.
That's what we're doing.
It's future.
You asked for something that was event specific.
Let me ask.
I think we were trying to figure that one through.
You asked for me to.
I'm sorry, Ms. Powers, go ahead.
Students can use that in a limited basis.
Ms. Powers had a question here.
Multivitamins, do they fall in the same category?
I don't know, I mean, a multivitamin?
Yeah.
I don't have a laundry list of what's been, of what's FDA considers to be medication.
FDA considers like 800,000 different chemicals to be medication, so I would guess that vitamins fall under the herbal type treatment, which they don't recommend being given in school, because if they aren't regulated how much is in there, then we don't know what we're giving to the children. But a multivitamin as well, I mean.
Got any bears that are.
Bug gum vitamins and stuff. When it comes down to school health, they recommend that medications be given at home unless it will affect the child's ability to be at school. So a multivitamin is usually given once a day, it should not be given at school.
Yeah, I was just thinking about this, well, then we're going to have to close down all the milk cells, because they fortify the milk, you know.
It's going to get.
So just take the milk out.
You just need to get it.
I think here are the problems that you run into, okay? You have a real conflict with what the Nurse Practice Act will allow you to do in your schools versus the, what you see, what you perceive as being things that are not harmful as far as your over the counter medicines. And that's where the conflict arises. So if you're going to allow students to start bringing over the counters to school, then I think you need to have a very strict protocol on how that is done, because you're either going to have to designate someone from each school to kind of regulate that, or you need to, you know, make sure that it's done with a parental permission form, you know, with strict guidelines. You don't want the first time that a kid takes cough medicine, you know, over the counter cough medicine to be in his second block period, you know, because mom gave him a note saying, you know, Johnny can use whatever it is, and he picks it up on the way to school, and the first time he takes it is at, is at class. That needs to have occurred at home under the parental supervision, so that that first time, there's no reaction, you know, when they get to school. So I think there's some certain things, and then it needs to be regulated as far as the code of conduct is concerned, because you don't want them, you know, it may be good for him, but it's not good for the next person.
Wes, that cannot be the same person that's administering prescription drugs in the clinic.
Right, because they're under the care of the nurse, so that's.
But here's the thing, and I totally understand, coming from a family of multitude of nurses, I totally understand what health services is trying to, where their hands are tied. So that part I get. What I'm struggling with is, and I understand the generic or the wide-reaching over the counter medicational concern. I think what we're struggling with is some common sense, what we almost would think of as personal items, not cough medicine. And so why could we not draft an amendment or a change of policy that defined two levels of over the counters? One, that is approved for students to have on their possession to, you know, and it's put in there, these are the responsibility of the parent, and we list what those would be, and we could be specific. We can be very specific how we want to do it, and we may right now be conservative in how we define those, and next year when we review it, we could expand, or it can be a little livelier and breathing. And then there are all the other ones that would then fall under as we've traditionally been now, or we are currently handling them. I would be very open to say things like, again, non-medicated Chapsticks. I would have no problem with sunscreens, and maybe we define, you know, they're not aerosol sprays, for example, or things of that nature. I think that we could list those as maybe, you know, over the counter level one, and then there's over the counter level two. And that's how we approach some common sense, because I don't think we're talking about cough medicine when we're all trying to talk about common sense. And I know that no matter what we may say we let students do, health services can't do it unless there's a doctor's order. I think that's, I think we pretty much understand that, so the only way they, so we just bypassed that. And I don't really want staff having to run around policing this either, that, is that a Chapstick, you know, this way or that way?
And that was going to be a suggestion I came up here to suggest very.
We just mind chain.
Well, very similar with just maybe adding something to that, because the caveat in like Wes had shared, is that if it's in the clinic, now it falls under the Nurse Practice Act. So if something was developed, and that list could grow, and if a child needed to carry something and it wasn't on that list, then we could have a parent write a note.
Nice and clean and simple.
We're not putting it in the clinic, so it's not going to be under the auspices of the HRA, who's under the license of the nurse, but it's also not going to fall in our.
Because, you know, here's one of the things.
I think it's very easy if you say, "We're going to have a, everything is considered over the counter medicine that must require your prescription or whatever, except for the following," and you list out four or three or four things, okay, and not this level.
And that, well, that's fine, I just mean, but that's what I refer.
But the problem that I would tell you that from a liability and from a student discipline thing is even with a parental note, if they're allowed to bring other over the counter medicines, you know how kids are, they start sharing that stuff, and, you know, maybe one child is allergic to Sudafed that is in something, or how it affects them. You have to be careful with that.
People are looking for fix now to deal with.
But then we don't put.
Sunscreen and the Chapstick issue, in medicated or not.
We can't deal with aspirin, let's say, right now, or Tylenol, we don't put that on the list.
If a student brings Sudafed and shares it, we're going to deal with it anyway.
Right.
Whether it's herbal vitamins, or marijuana, or pain pills, we're going to have to deal with it the same way if he's sharing.
I understand that in perspective, that has not been a big problem.
Right.
But also understand is that when you kick that door open and allow them to bring it on their person.
They're already bringing sunscreen out.
I'm not talking, I'm not speaking of sunscreen, but it's a thing of, you know, if students aren't supposed to have certain medicines, even, they're not even supposed to have their prescribed medication on them, and there's a reason for that, is for the sharing of it and the taking too much of it, or not following the doctor's prescription, which is why we put it into the clinic. If you allow them to have certain levels of your over the counter, you still run into that same problem, is that, you know, if I'm allowed to bring, you know, Tylenol, cold and flu, and keep that with me, it's a convenience factor now that I can give it to somebody else. Even if I have a doctor, my parent's note that says that I have that, you know, it just makes it that much more easier, and my friend goes, "Hey, I've got a sinus cold too, give me some of that."
Yeah, but I don't think that that, I don't know that there's a board member here that's wanting to give a blanket permission, and one of the parents signing here, that a kid can bring Sudafed or any other cold medicine. I think we're really trying to deal with the. I think we're really trying to deal with the emergent, the, the need, it's immediate, to relieve and give some common sense to what's already going on out there with the usage of sunscreen.
Here's what the biggest.
Short list, I'll draft an amendment to the policies into the.
Ms. Alro, and I, and I don't know that Pam can answer this question, but I really look back at when all our kids went to school. I don't know that it was any different rules than it was on our school, kids went to school. The big difference last year, because I know cement, is it okay? Where our kids shared their cough drops maybe, but I don't know that we've ever had an issue when a student brought a cough drop. I don't know that that student ever brought it to the health clinic to be dispersed. He or she kept it in their pocket or their purse, just like they're probably doing today.
I, I think at the elementary, they do, they.
And at the elementary, well, probably a little bit different, but I don't, we're not making this mountain. I mean, it was created because we had a doctor's note last year, and it's a new ruling. I just think we need to get to the common sense piece where we can sit back and say, hey, here's where we started, and, and not make it so ridiculous on our parents, who some are working two jobs to put food on the table. They can't go to the doctor and get a doctor's note for a cough drop, so, you know, I just think we need to just.
So, here's what I think.
We need a doctor's note as for aspirin for high school students. I think if you're a high school student, you bring it like medina in a free dosed package of two, with a note from your parent, I don't have a problem with that.
But the, but the Health Department is saying they can't, Health Services is saying they can't be the one to be involved in the administering or the oversight.
I know we have a problem with it having it in their pocket in a free dose.
They'd have to self.
And then they're self-doing it.
Florida State statute, you, students cannot carry medication on them in the school.
Even an aspirin?
Or allowed, even an aspirin, under Florida State statute, only four, even with the doctor's note. Either pediatrician or a doctor that wanted a student to carry their migraine medication in their pocket. Florida, with the doctor's note, but under Florida State statute, only four items that, um, students can carry with them. There's an EpiPen, an inhaler, um, pancreatic enzymes, or.
Diabetic.
Diabetic supplies, because there are only four that they're allowed.
And those are defined now as medications, not OTCs or recommendations. Those are specific that they are a medication, and an aspirin then falls on, or, and I say aspirin, I apologize, but then, any of the acetaminophen, all of those, fall into that same?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
And if you need a doctor's note, you can't get a doctor's note that said, anytime this child comes to you with a headache, you can give them. It has to be a specific time, it's limited.
It can be, um, that.
Be a blanket.
Yeah, it can be here, but, I mean, our clinics, if it comes before a certain time during the day, we have to call a parent to double check, because a student could have taken a Tylenol at seven thirty in the morning, just think that they could take a Tylenol at seven thirty in the morning and come back at nine thirty. There is a limit to how much Tylenol you can take in a day. And I have to say, aspirin, no students under eighteen should be taking aspirin anyway, period.
Well, I'm.
I know, I just have to get on my soaps.
So, board members, here's, I think, the question that we're at today. Can we get a consent, and I think, can we, can we talk about consensus of direction?
Yeah, you're not gonna vote on it.
So, if we can give some direction consensus that we would like to have a revision made to, um, to the policy, to include an exceptions list, is I think what we're talking about. And then, what are we willing to have today on that exceptions list for him to include? Now, we may, again, decide when it comes to us to strike, amend, revise, it's net, so we're not, we're not putting it in stone today, but at least so that it's included.
Do we deal with the aspirin?
Well, that's what I say, I, I think what we're talking about are not those things. I think we're talking about, those wouldn't be dealt with any differently than they are today. Is I think if we're doing an exception, anything not on that exception list for the moment would not be dealt with any differently.
But previously, and, and Ms. Cardiella, you probably don't know this, because you were born as a school nurse, I guess, um, two years ago, let's say, three years ago. A parent could bring them, oh, a Tylenol, leave it at the school, they didn't have to have a doctor's permission, is that correct?
No.
Okay, so the difference is that now we're requiring a physician's permission to administer this over the counter drug to a student. We can't just have a parent's permission slip, that's the difference.
Correct.
Okay. So, are we providing permission slips already kind of pre-made out, fill in the blanks for students to take to the doctor?
Yes, and they're online, and the Health Department helped us with last acting them out to all the doctor's offices in the county. Trying to make it helpful, and I even email parents with them as an attachment. But can I just say that the Florida Administrative School Health Guidelines were updated in 2012? So, I mean, I don't know what they were before that, all I know is that's when they were updated, since I've only been here since July. But it could have been a change there, and I'm not positive.
Now, when I'm referring to board members to an exception list, this would be that students would be permitted to have on them and to administer as, as they decide.
Instead of saying that, could we just say that over the counter medication that he said be, goes, does not include?
That's fine.
Just make it down more.
So, I will tell you.
I'll understand what you mean.
That is direct.
You wanna exclude these from the response, from the habit to have a doctor's.
So, I'm gonna start with Ms. Bryant, I'm gonna go right down the line and say what item, what specific item.
How do we know?
Well, I think we've had phone calls as to the things that parents.
Why don't we find out what would qualify?
Well, everything, I think, we've determined.
That should come from the back. Why we all.
Okay, that's fine.
If you have any suggestions, it'd be good.
Well, I was just gonna say, I, I think, Ms. Bryant and I would ask.
Sunscreen.
Sunscreen, chapstick, and that to, at the secondary level, something that we can work with these, these, these young people that are driving to school, that have jobs, that can't take a painkiller, you know, your bubble idea. If, if I see a young person take a, a Tylenol, and I don't intervene, you know, I'm looking at that, that high schooler that is responsible, it's hard for me to.
Well, that made me a conversation that we talked about, do we have another level exceptions for secondary or high school? Because I can think of girls during certain times would need to have something, and I don't think they really wanna go and have that conversation with people. So.
But that would be ruled out, right?
At this point, it would be, yes, yeah.
I'm gonna ask a question about, the permission slips that you're talking about, does it have to be per item? Like, you have to have one for Tylenol, you have to have one for whatever it is that you're gonna.
Yes, one for each medication.
You can't, uh, parents just can't say any medication you want.
No, I think it's always been one for medication, even when we allow it with the, um, parent signature. That way you can keep it in the bulk, and you can figure out what medication, because each, one has a different directions, like, you take a leave differently than you take Tylenol, so, and the directions are on there, as well as the side effects should be listed on there too, as well.
We do get that in the clinic now, we get, we have notes from doctors that, you know, to give them Pepto Bismol, or, or aspirin as directed on the bottle, or those kind of things. So, I mean, it, it's, there are parents that are doing what we're, oh, in policy now.
In the clinic, looking at that.
Well, if it's a prescription note, the clinic gate is.
All the notes are checked.
No, I, I don't prescription, but I mean the others.
And the non-prescriptions, the nurses have to sign off on any medications that are being given in the clinic. When, when a new medication comes in, I know you guys know we don't have nurses in the schools every single day, every single school, but the health room attendant will have it set aside when the nurse gets there the next day to sign off that the form is filled out correctly, that it's not like more than what is standard in giving this child of that age, or.
If they have contact lens care.
That's not.
That's not a problem.
That's not.
Not an issue.
Yeah, I wondered that too.
It's on your sheet here. And then cough drops during the testing times, I know kids will wanna bring cough drops. So, I, if we can look at cough drops.
Well, cough drops like non-medicated cough drops.
Well, non-medicated, we don't have to deal with that anyway, the honey and lemon kind, those aren't even an issue, um, at this point, but I'm just throwing stuff out.
And again, right now, we're not saying that these are, these are ones that you are gonna look into and come back to us with.
We're just exploring.
Ms. Powers, did you? Okay. Ms. Deitchman, did you have anything?
Um, I was just, you know, again, looking at high school level and the cough drops and all that, I, I would, you know, listen to whatever they would recommend.
Okay.
You know, I, I think it's, it's just like anything else, like the medical marijuana issue. It's not so much that you're saying, I approve of this, but I'm taking away our, the criminal sanction, I'm taking away the penalty, that's, you know, so, other than the sharing issue, um, I think that's the differentiation, and not requiring it to go through the nurses', um, clinic.
I'll, I'll share with you, my tenure at Student Services, I would remember ever getting a call that a student had a cough drop on the past, um, so, like Mr. Mullin said, and as Samuel said, it's really never, it's not a level of.
If, if you find it as a principle, you either take it, have the parent come get it, or you tell them not to bring it back, that kind of thing at the high school level, but it was never, never a source of discipline that I can recall.
Is hand lotion on the list? So, hand lotion they can have on, a student could have on them now, and it doesn't, okay. And then the other question, because I do see this, and it's become a trend with elementary school kids, is sanitizer. I think sanitizer is prohibited.
Does alcohol, are they, are they making some non-alcohol same way?
There we have it on school.
And that's what you have at the school.
But we have a lot of kids that they go to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, or they go to Bath Works, and they have on their little lunch packs, they have that.
The whole reason that they changed out the sale.
The alcohol content.
Well, number one, I think there were kids that were drinking it in unmade, and, and number two, they would light it on fire.
Oh, okay, that is.
Alcohol, so, you know, you down, you down some of your paper towels, and they're.
Now we will.
Nobody won't put this stuff in there, it's non-alcoholic.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, so, hand sanitizer does not fall into that.
It's not a conspiracy to be mean.
Hey, or we're talking about non-alcoholic, hand sanitizer does not qualify as an item, okay. Then, then the things that looks like, you know, sunscreen, chapstick, contact, we already said, is not, and then some form or description of cough drops is what we're talking about. If, again, we're not saying we're limiting ourselves to this, we're just saying this is some of the direction the board is saying, we're, we're hearing from the community. I would only add that I would prefer if, assuming this is gonna eventually go into the code of conduct, or as well as policy, is that there's some direction or responsibility given to the parent, or acknowledgement that they, that, that there's some understanding that, that the parent has some responsibility to this, if, if it's, um, you know, the student. And then again, sharing of it, because here's the old thing, I mean, they share chapstick, there could be a transmitting of, of, they got a cold. But frankly, if they share a hat, we have a lice issue. So, some of those things, again, there's some common sense that, that.
Would the board be opposed to, if you're going to, you know, obviously you need some parental permission for them to have this, is what I'm hearing, as far as.
No, I think I'm, we're saying that we're just assuming that the parent has responsibility, but I don't think we're asking that they have a written parent permission, correct?
I think that, from a liability perspective, that would be a, a good thing to do.
I would say that's massive at the high school.
That would be huge.
Fifteen hundred students, and you see a teacher, see somebody pull out a chapstick, and then they gotta call the office to see if they got a permission slip on file.
I see what you're saying as far as the logistics.
These are ones that if they see, we know that there's a non-issue. Yeah, if they're, if it doesn't fall into this limited, then they, they can assume that they need something. I, I would agree, though, that I'm also open to a conversation about high school secondary level, of maybe we do come back and talk about that.
I, I would suggest that you make it different.
Pain pills.
I know, different for, for this stuff anyhow, as far as, you know, uh, uh, elementary school, middle school, and high school, because you're gonna have, you know, elementary school kids should not, are we shouldn't carry sunscreen? I mean, maybe they can't apply it to themselves, you know, they're not, not developed enough to be able to do that, it's second grade, you know, versus fifth grade, you know.
What grade do they start going to? I should know, is it fourth grade that they go to?
Right now, it's third grade in swoop, and, uh, but we're gonna.
So, I, I would even be open to saying at third grade and above, that we could start that, because that's really when we have some of those issues, is, is in those activities. So, if we said third grade and, and above that, I wouldn't have a problem unless the board has.
Second grades.
Second grade.
Second grade?
Second and third.
Oh, that's right, we're transitioning.
And then next year it'll be second.
So, you know, drafted as second, and then we can have another conversation when it comes back to us, Wes, and you, and I'm sure you're gonna have a recommendation.
Well, I just. I just need, as far as second graders, you know, we don't allow second graders to carry around a cough drop in their pocket.
You know, make part of the seal, you bring it and you give to your teacher.
Well, that's different for the elementary school. I'll write it, I'll write it a certain way, and y'all can, you know.
And then we'll battle it out then.
Stick with it.
All right. So, I just wanna say.
Or just now, medicated, or something, cough drops.
I haven't gotten a phone call from anybody, it could be just me, but, um, I, I don't say we're responding to the committee, I think we are responding to the committee, but I think we also should take credit for having enough sense in our own heads to address this issue.
Forget about that, we need to take some credit for that.
I think a lot of the calls we got, Ms. Deitchman, were really geared at, what's gonna happen if my child shows up with an aspirin?
That was really.
She's getting expelled for two years, and, uh, and like, as Regina said, that we have not had, we've not taken that stance. If it's something they're not supposed to have over the counter, and they're not doing anything wrong with it, uh, then we, we've tried to take a common sense approach to the discipline.
And it's not even that they come to us for possible expulsion, every suspension notice, we just go to our office, and we look at everyone else. I've not, I've not seen any incident that we, we need to have such a sort of.
Okay, do you have what you need? Board members, you have any less concerns before? Okay, then we can move on. Thank you very much. Expulsions and suspensions.
Let me shift my.
No problem. Thank you, board members, for that discussion.
We'll recycle the folders, because I look great, nice.
I, I just organized them.
Thank you, I was not gonna put it in a folder, because I was so, so worried about Mr. Locker's response, but I do, you're all professionals, and it, uh, he would have been.
Let me be the first to say good afternoon. Uh, what I have shared with you are three documents. I am comfortable to say that all three should look somewhat familiar to all of you as far as the format, but the content in all of them has changed. Some has changed slightly, and some have a little bit more changes to them. Before I share these three documents with you, I wanted the board to be aware that I did seek feedback, and I had conversation with many of the stakeholders who are involved with the expulsion process, including the Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mullin, administration from both secondary levels, middle school and high school, the Director and Coordinator for the SE, provided input and conversation, as well as the Director and Principal of Renaissance slash SIRI. So, input was gathered and conversation was had. The first document I'd like to share with you is the District Student Services expulsion process flow chart. I believe it was the first one in your packet. This flow chart is something that we currently use, and it's a very valuable tool used between schools and student services. This is a process laid out that tells you pretty much step by step what processes are followed when a student has an infraction of the code of conduct. And I won't read every phase of this to you, I'll just, um, address any questions you might have. I did highlight a couple of areas where I added some information specifically all the way on the right. It talks about, in lieu of expulsion, placement at the Renaissance Center. Although this is an expulsion flow chart, I did want to include that, because it is part of the process. Any questions?
What's forty-five days?
Forty-five days is a quarter.
I thought, okay, so I was under the impression that they want students to stay until the end of the quarter and also they wanted them to stay for eighteen weeks. So is that a discussion we're gonna have in the future or is that part of this discussion now?
We can have that discussion now and of course, the schools and SERMY were part of that discussion. For possession, we all know it's forty-five days or a quarter. And in the past, we have had students that have gone over to Renaissance and debate and deciding on when that forty-five, depending on when that forty-five days fail, whether it was a week before the quarter ended or a week after, administration from both schools would have conversation. What Renaissance has agreed on, the forty-five day minimum with the possible transition, that a student would go back if they met all the requirements through Renaissance.
But I thought they didn't wanna do that, I thought they wanted to hold them until the end of the quarter anyway.
What, what they're willing to do is look at each individual student. Now, this is just for substance abuse violation, not, not any student that's gone there directly from the school. What they're willing to look at is where the student is in regards academically, if it's a good time to move them forward or return them to their zone school, and to see if they've been successful with the drug testing, to see if they've been successful academically, their attendance plays a big part, and of course, their behaviors.
But the answer, Ms. Deutschman's question, yes, it is at the break of a nine weeks. So it could be forty-four days, forty-three, it could be fifty-two days.
And I think originally when SERMY was talking to you, they were discussing how they did things in Marion County, which was not block schedule, realizing that block schedule, a nine weeks is an eighteen weeks. So they've been more, and they'll do whatever we want, they'll work it out any way we want.
But I, I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know, working within their.
Absolutely.
I agree with you to that, what's for them?
And all of our packets reference that, that it says a minimum of forty-five days and if they choose to send them back in day forty-three, forty-one, or whichever.
Or fifty-six.
Or day sixty, it's written to say by meeting all requirements.
Y'all remember, that's been a big issue even before, was when the offense happened, is, is a nine weeks really a nine weeks?
And you'll also see language on matrices that I'll share with you that say ninety days for those expulsions for distributing. The second hand that I put in your packet is titled Zero Tolerance Controlled Substance and Alcohol. This is specifically for the substance and/or alcohol. Changed a little bit of the titles or the categories up at the top. The first column is the incident, the second is the action. There's a couple of choices with each one of those incidents. Talks about if there's board action or not, the process that takes place, and the options that parents have. This is all verbiage out of the code of conduct. I've just generalized it and put it in a form that's a little bit easier to look at than to flip pages.
I, I don't agree with your third page. It says possession of controlled substance or alcohol by student in the sale or delivery, or the intent to. That's not what it says, it's for compensation, so it's.
It's different.
Where is that?
Maybe it's just confusing, because where's the distribution one, is that? Giving, sharing, that's the second one, okay. This is sale, or delivery, or the, I don't know, basically it's a sale.
Are you talking about this page?
Yes, it's for compensation.
That verbiage comes out of the code of conduct?
That's exactly the way it's written.
I'm gonna triple check right now.
Mr. Bradshaw, she's doing that, just a question for clarification. On the zero tolerance controlled substance and alcohol, this is where school boards have some discretion as to zero tolerance, both in developing a policy and of executing a decision or, or.
Really man, yeah, I think it has a zero tolerance policy, that they're only mandated to expel kids for certain reasons.
Okay. So this provides discretion pretty much all the way through it?
I'd love to say you're right, Ms. Deutschman, that word sale should be sharing. And then it is verbatim in the code. Possession of, of controlled substance or alcohol by a student in the giving, sharing, delivery, or the intent to distribute.
Right, that's the second one, I'm talking about the last one.
That's where I am, the last, the last one. The word sale is not in the code, the word sharing is.
Then that's, then the.
I was on the wrong page.
Yeah.
Yes, in the code it says possession of controlled substance or alcohol by a student in the sale or delivery or the intent to deliver for compensation.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that, that's clear, that it's only for compensation, not sharing. It's a compensation that makes it a one year, not the delivery, not the sharing, not the possession.
Right, which, right, which of course, yes, well, you have to share to get, you have to give it to somebody to get compensated.
Compensation is what makes it a year.
No matter if you're the local drug dealer and you're just telling him, you go over there, give him ten bucks and he's, he's gonna get it and you arrange it. We don't have any provisions for the arranger?
Who's giving the money?
Maybe he's a middleman, he never had possession of it.
Go cut him off, sure.
I, I hear what you're saying and yes, the one year.
It says possession and sale, and I.
That's what the code says, we would have to change the code if that's what we.
You know, suppose I set up a drug deal for tomorrow, somebody gives me ten dollars, I don't have the drugs on me until tomorrow and they turn me in. We've expelled kids for the intent to sell and they never had anything on them. So I'm not sure that and in there needs to be there. Maybe not even the possession, just maybe you should start the sale, delivery, or intent to deliver for compensation to another person, any drugs or alcohol. Do you understand what I'm trying to make? But that's in the code of conduct written this way.
Yeah, we, we have to revise that, or look at revising it possibly through Ms. Powers. No, no, that could be something brought up, Ms. Powers, at our December meeting. And then if that is decided on, we will mirror the code to the matrix.
When we refer to action here, we're referring to superintendent action.
Yes, sir.
And I, I.
It's the superintendent's recommendation.
Right, and that's why I was gonna say, I know we're trying to probably give an impression that that's what will happen to the student as a deterrent perhaps, but for this board's understanding, action is not that that's what we only do, because we've certainly made recommendations and modifications to these incidences. I would hope that we continue to do that so we do not tie our hands.
Absolutely, and again, this is part of the process. So when a school has a situation where a student is selling drugs for compensation, they look at the situation, they look at the code, they have to recommend to the superintendent what the code recommends. Then when we bring it, when I bring it to you all for an administrative hearing, yes, you look at each student individually, you look at the situation, you look at the, the needs of the student, the, the whole situational thing, yes, you tear it apart and you do what's in the best interest of students. But this is really a guide for those that make that recommendation, because they don't have the authority to make any other recommendation except what's in the code, correct?
So can I just ask you, since this is a brand new document, is this a brand new document or was this revised?
It was revised.
Okay, where it says yes, I, I've never seen this document before, so I, I don't know what this is. Can we just change it to approved instead of yes?
I like that.
I am here for suggestions, absolutely. I, I think, I think.
So I guess the question then maybe is where it says action, should that, I mean, should we have superintendent's action?
I, I think what, what I, what my intention was with putting yes here is that it goes to the board, because the board is the only authority figure.
Required board action.
Correct.
It requires board action.
So I could put required instead of approved or yes.
That makes more sense.
I'm looking at this, this, this is a tool for board members to reference. It's from my understanding of what the purpose.
No, this is.
It's both. The original idea was to develop a board tool.
No, I don't think it was a board tool, I think, I think it was originally when Mr. Hilger was here.
That's the other one that I did with Mr. Hilger, he's over two.
Yeah, I think he was just trying to get a, a handle on how y'all were handling that.
And school adminis, sorry.
I don't think I ever saw this, I was over.
School administrators, you know, they'll call, you know, what is this, what is that, you know? It's, it's sometimes much easier to have this in front of you than to go to page eleven or to go to page twelve in the code. And it, it works for, it's a double tool, if you will.
It was certainly never adopted by the board.
No, I'm just looking at a resource, something that we can state this in.
Well, I think that's, the other thing too is, is that we wanted to continue to have flexibility though, so that we aren't.
Well, no, I agree with you.
Yeah, that's the only concern that I have, is that I don't wanna tie our hands.
And absolutely, in due process, the school board, the school administration, myself, share with the parents, you know, there's a minimum and there's a maximum, like for possession. The maximum, of course, would be expulsion for this year and all of next year. We tell the parent that the recommendation is the minimum. If they're still not happy, we always offer them the opportunity to come in front of the board.
But zero tolerance, the minimum is going to be, in this case, the action.
Is this because your policy?
Because that's our zero tolerance policy.
Yes.
And only by a board action could that be modified.
Correct.
Well, one of the issues.
Yes.
One of the issues that we had, I don't see it on here, yes, it is, okay, is the ten day out of school suspension. So we were in a period where some of the schools were making the assumption that if I send a student to Renaissance, then they don't have to have a ten day suspension. And we were really clear that the ten day suspension needed to be mandatory. It was, it was expected to have a ten day out of school suspension, rather than go to Citrus High School today and Renaissance tomorrow, so.
And that was the directive you gave me last year and we're following through with it?
Yeah, and I think that's one of the reasons why we went back and we kind of tried to write down what the process is so everybody understood it, because there was different interpretations being made.
I think that occurred when they were, when we were trying to send their OSSs to Renaissance. So in their mind, if he's gonna serve his OSS at Renaissance, he might as well start there sooner.
Well, this was, I think it was the, was to the transition program for the nine weeks, that some of them didn't think that they needed to have the ten day suspension. But most of them are out for ten days anyway while they're waiting for board approval.
It takes that long to get through the.
Yeah, but sometimes they would be quick to.
Is there though, a way that, I'm just thinking out loud here, that if, if, there's an act, there's an incident done by a student and in, you know, that afternoon, the parents are like, yep, we're just disappointed, we're, we're ready to move forward on whatever happens, you still have due process. Is there a way that that student could then start tomorrow at Renaissance while due process is going on? If there was an agreement between the parties? And I'm thinking between student services, the principal, and.
Can we do that? Yes, we can, but I think the direction from the board was the.
Was there a reason why we wouldn't if, if all of those parties are agreement? It's just gonna come to us for formality. I'd rather have that student.
It's part of the punishment piece.
Is to have the memo.
The school's suspension, yeah, it needs to be, rather than just go from one school to another, it needed to be a little message here, not a little message, but it needed to be a strong message. You know, that, that you have committed a, a very severe violation at your school and part of the penalty is to be out of school. And you know, you may stay out of the school if it doesn't work out for you, but you know, the ten day was a minimum.
I'm thinking Renaissance is a consequence, or is that, and that's, that's, that's happened before me, so.
Again, that's code language, if you wanna bring it up for discussion.
Well, no, that's why I'm really kind of asking, and, and Pat, you've been at the longest on that, but I mean, other board members, I don't know.
Well, look at it from the logistics perspective, with the, the due process timeline and SERMY's forty-five, they've got a cutoff at the beginning of the year, forty-five days. Anybody that enters after forty-five days will stay until the release date in, in December, or whatever is mandated by the board, so looking at that.
It depends on their progress too, Ms..
Yeah, and he did say that, there's a couple of exceptions.
But logistically, by the time parents are, by the time we get the suspension notice, then that paperwork is sent up to Mrs. Himmel, and she's very good at getting it back to us very quickly. Then by statute, letters have to go out to parents. Parents are entitled to ten days, Wes, prior to the school board meeting, if they wanted to set up a forum hearing with the board, they are entitled to some things, but I hear what you're saying. If a parent says they don't want that. But logistically, then for me to get all the information, to set up a meeting, a parent's working, we struggle to get it quickly to you.
So then again, maybe the, in, in keeping with what Ms. Deutschman is saying, is there a way then maybe after the ten day period, is there a period after that where now we're talking twenty days? Where the, I'm saying the student could have gotten into Renaissance.
If they're going to Renaissance, we'll get them into Renaissance by then.
Just help administratively assign them to the Renaissance Center.
So after ten days, we have that, okay. That's really, I guess then, then that's really what I'm trying to do, is get them to the wherever their services.
Even, even with SERMY doing it, we have not had, we have not had those kind of issues. I mean, they, they work, that transition's been as smooth as it was when it was our own staff.
Okay.
We even encourage the parent, let's say their suspension's over, let's say they have the due process Monday, their suspension's over Wednesday. I encourage them, if they go to SERMY, do the registration, take a tour, they'll all be set, they can start Wednesday. We don't, I don't encourage them, wait till Wednesday to go visit SERMY, see what's going on, right away so that that eleventh day, they're in school.
Okay, that's what I, that's really what I was hoping.
And students are doing work, the administration from their zone school gives them work if they ask for it. Most of the time they do, and then they just bring it to Renaissance when they go there.
And work is something that is, has to be driven by the student parent if they're wanting that work. And I, and I don't have a problem with that, by the way, but that is, it's not, it's not like we're gonna do that work for them.
And that's what the code says, but I would say historically, every due process that I bring that up is a student doing work. The administration will say, yes, we have work sometimes, the administrator will bring work with them or exchange it. Just, we don't want those kids to lose any of that momentum and time. The last document I have in there, the proud author is Ms. Deutschman, and I really struggled with tweaking that one, Ms. Deutschman, so please know out of, out of due respect, I, I did take your Level One and Two out of there, but Lisa Dell told me you wouldn't mind, so.
You mean you took this document and made it in the last page?
I did, maya cooper, maya cooper. And I, and I'll share with you why if I can, and I'd be very happy to, to make the adjustments. I, I wasn't understanding, and I wasn't part of the development of this when, when you did it to help Mr. Hilger. I didn't understand the level, the rationale behind the levels.
It was just an idea.
That's what I thought, so I felt, I felt, you, I hope I did you justice. And again, this is just another matrix similar to the one you just had, it's just a little bit more synthesized. So we use both of them because I honor both of them, and some people like a format on two pages, some like it on one. So again, I think all these three tools are very useful and I'm glad I had an opportunity to update them.
It was an act of reflection, wasn't it? Just reviewing all the different varieties of forms to get the same thing.
I, I reflect daily on stuff like this.
That's because you use it every day.
I do, I do, and it surprises me, because as small as this book is, I mean, I have my thumbprints on it, coffee stains on it. It's, it's very informational and very, very, very detailed, but yet succinct.
So Ms. Balfour, you have been talking about this a long time, you see it now, so how is this going to help you going forward making decisions?
I'll tell you what I did, I took your Level ID map.
Oh, you made your own.
Per alternative expulsion category table, and I, I came up with my Citrus County School District Discipline Guide for school board members for zero tolerance. And, and what everybody notices as you move through life, people gravitate toward different tools to make their life easier. So for me, I, I like my tool.
Okay, are you sharing it?
Well, yes, I will, but again, kind of back to Regina, this is a format. You know, content is something that we can discuss as far as driving policy to help enhance SERMY's. You know, content is something that we can discuss as far as driving policy to help enhance Sermi's impact on the district. And it's just a marriage between the forms that were delivered from Regina. It's just basically taking your leveling idea, looking at the first page, does everybody have a page? Looking at the first page dealing with violent crime only under the Zero Tolerance offense. And then I did use your leveling idea, because it really is an in-your-face delineation of, of critical action, so... And then I mirrored on the other side what the consequence would be based on the action of the person committing it. So it kind of spells it out, and this is all pulled right out of the book that we have, that is our Guide to Success here as far as Code of Conduct. And again, it's, it is a rough draft, simply designed just to see if a format is something that we could use. Looking at the next page, the action is under the category of controlled substance and alcohol. And then it delineates levels based on what we were talking about earlier, severity. So Level 1, the usage of the alcohol or controlled substance, Level 2, the distribution, and Level 3, the compensation. It's an in-your-face delineation of problems, and with right next to it, what the Code of Conduct states. Now, we have flexibility, that flexibility, if we wanted to take this a step higher, we could certainly outline and determine what we want to do within some reasonable boundaries. But again, it's just a tool to tweak if anybody is interested in tweaking it, or if we want to go back to what we were just looking at with the alternative to expulsion tool that was designed, or go back to the flow chart.
Well, look at why we have these tools. These tools were not for us, because we, we were clear about the flexibility that we have in approving or not approving or changing the recommendations from the superintendent. The issue sometimes started at the school level. The school level sometimes would say, at the school level, well, the student committed this crime, and so I have to make this recommendation for this action, even though maybe I don't really approve of it. We've seen that happen. We have had, and when we had, when Mr. Hilger was the Director of Student Services, he sometimes struggled with the consistency or the lack of consistency from the board. Sometimes we would, situations would change. We had a whole flotilla of kids who came in with the little star things, and they threw those. That was a big thing for a while. Then we had brass knuckles. Then, now we're back to marijuana. We were off marijuana, now we're back to marijuana. You know, we've had, and, and every time we do that, and then sometimes we have seniors that come in, the graduating seniors come in, now that changes the whole thing. So, I think Mr. Hilger was a, was very wanting to make sure that the recommendations they brought before this board were consist, precisely what we would approve. As I said to Mrs. Allagret, she's okay, we approve it. He really, he's the kind of person that really wants to please people and make sure that what he does is what we want, rather than...
And again, I do want to please.
But it's not about, but you know what, it's, there's a, when there's a different...
I want that on the record, okay?
He, he, being new to the position, he really struggled with what's his role in making sure that the recommendations meet our expectations. I think at some point after a while, you say, I don't know what these people are going to do, but I'm just going to make them expectations based on what I think is, is our policy, right? And that's, yeah, so, so, and we're pretty clear on that. And I think that allows us, instead of having a cookie cutter and boundaries and all that, we, it allows us the ability to apply the common sense, the empathy, the understanding of the student's future implications for his, the rest of his life. That we are not bound by a matrix, and we are not bound by a checklist, and we are not bound by a chart. We're bound by our conscience.
Well, and if Florida state mandates, the statute mandates, definitely put boundaries that...
And, and, and that's why I include in your packet the student, what's it called?
Civil Rights Act.
Which is the interpretation of, listen, school boards, please use your empathy and your common sense and your conscience when it comes to issues of discipline and not have students in jail instead of in the principal's office. So it asks us, it begs us to please not have blinders and not have boundaries and not have a channel that we say we can't go outside the lines.
And I think you've done that in the past, and I, I think that being at the board level and not at the school level helps the schools.
Exactly.
Now, let them bring it, yes.
The schools stay between the lines.
Right, the schools stay between the lines, let the board, because there's five of you here that represent the community, and you, you have that autonomy to do that. And I think that's worked well in the past.
Ms. Balfour...
Because there are no black and white lines as far as, in some of these situations. There's a lot of extenuating circumstances.
Even, even when we had the issue with the, Mr. Fretsch, the issue with the weapon. I mean, I think we all learned from that experience, the bus stop issue.
Really? We had to bring it up.
I'm picking that one to my dad. I'm picking that one to my dad.
I wasn't even here, and I've learned it.
There were issues that, that superseded the Code of Conduct and even the federal law, because we had issues of who, who supervised bus stops. What was it a bus stop, what was it not a bus stop? How far would the bus have to be before it was a bus stop? Before the bus driver could see the kids? I mean, you know, what is the parameters that we have control of as separate from what is the law say in this situation, this is how you have to interpret it? Because there's many different other scenarios and circumstances that come into play that only we would know. So again, you know, I don't want to have statute in front of me and say, you have to do this, when I say, I don't even think this applies to the situation.
No, this is just, again, it's a tool. It's a reference tool, just that this is a reference tool. So as a board member, you recognize the boundaries and flexibility that you have as a, as a decisive factor in whatever the situation is. Again, this is just a tool, it's a resource.
Ms. Balfour, from your chart...
Oh, I know, it's just a rough draft.
That's okay. Where it says expulsion, one full year, that's 365 days, not 100 days, school calendar year, not school year. So you might, if you use it, it might change it.
Yeah, but again, it was just a rough draft, there's some, there's a couple of statute issues. But in, in, at the school sites, so the teachers are consistent, and again, it's just about having tools. It's, and it's at different levels. So, I'm just looking for that consistency within...
Is there a problem that's broke?
...the preparation. And I'm just throwing this out, just, you know, as always said, I wish we had something on the back that we can just reference, you know, fire-provoking of like, oh yeah, this is what they did at the school site level. And it's just a due process...
That's something that happened.
Yeah, this originated from Cusper River High School, and then other schools have picked it up. I just grabbed it, I happened to go there yesterday, I grabbed it off the wall.
So they won't know whether they're breaking rules or not?
I know, so...
Why did they add it?
Oh my God.
You know, one of the other issues...
We changed something as simple as, oh, we're just, they have a fact rule. Like, is that related?
Well, you see, and those...
It's a great tool.
There's other things here that always come up. And we had our perpetual visitor who now has not come back. It's what's the difference between a school discipline plan and a school board code of conduct issue? And I think schools have discipline plans. High schools just have, remember they had the color-coded things and all that? And I think we need to leave the schools alone and let them develop their own discipline plans with their own rules and their own list of what they can do and what they can't do.
As long as it does not change what our expectation is at the board level.
Well, as long as it doesn't violate the Code of Conduct. And that's where I think we get into some issues with the misinterpretation and overinterpretation of what's a school-based discipline plan and what's the Code of Conduct.
Well, where are we involved and where are we not involved? Nice, clean tool. And I know you've got this thing memorized inside now, I'm just looking at it. As things change, as we progress, and again, you guys don't need the tool, I'm going to...
Well, we, every year, of course...
I like your flow chart.
I haven't even known the other one, where the other one came from with all the colors.
No, that's very detailed.
Here's a concern that I have, if you all start making level offenses, even if you don't, and you start, or you start doing that and start following it, you're basically adopting a policy or a rule, and it needs to go through the rulemaking process. So even if one of you or all of you do some little chart that says, this is how we're going to act all the time, then you are basically adopting a policy.
Well, it spells it out. I mean, for me, it spells, it spells it out. When I'm looking at just, and again, it's just a tool. And I'm not looking at developing any kind of a policy, this is just a reference sheet for me. It's a resource.
Well, that's what she did, and made it so that it's here, she's a restating of the Code of Conduct.
Exactly, that's all it is. So not to drive a policy change here when it comes to consequences in action and board action. It's just nothing more than a nice, clean reference sheet, you know? And if, if it works and people want to see it go at a further level of development, where the kinks are worked out, and we have more detail, and we'll do that. I mean, obviously, those that have gone before us put a lot of time in developing the flow chart, the leveling strategy. There must have been a need prior to my inquisition, but we wouldn't have layers of attempt...
And those were things that were done at the time because they were needed. Those are not things that I think this board has recognized that we've needed at this stage.
This is what we do right here.
This is, this is it, and...
Zero tolerance...
And again, I'm not, I'm not kidding that you use any of these. Again, it's back to this as a tool.
But we're saying why the flow charts were there. They were there at a specific time to help guide Ed Services and for clarification. At this time, we haven't been doing that because there hasn't been a need that we feel.
The places, the names change. There's always going to be a need for clarification and opportunity to enhance the workplace by offering tools and resources.
Until, until there's a recommendation for expulsion that doesn't come before the board, so that is an internal document by Student Services and the superintendent on how they're going to process something until there's an actual recommendation. So I mean, really, you, as a...
Does it fall within our jurisdiction?
You get it, I mean, you can have that for informational purposes as far as that's concerned, but, you know, until the superintendent recommends the expulsion, which y'all have set out parameters on what you want to have, you know, by policy, these things have to come, but up until that point, how it gets there is just a...
And, and Ms. Balfour, you may not realize, but different boards around the state operate differently. We actually sit as a deciding factor of what the action will be. That is not what happens around the state. Different states will have, different districts will have where a rotating single board member will sit on an action committee and be the one that simply just sits in the room when action is done, and it is done on a leveling format. We've all decided we wanted to be part of the process. We wanted there to be an opportunity for parents to come forward, state their case.
I'm not advocating that we change the process at all. I appreciate the process. I've not indicated at all that I want to change the process, Mr. Kennedy.
I don't think that was what I was saying, Ms. Balfour. I was stating what happens around the state, and I was just simply saying, this is why we've done what we've done.
Some of them have hearing officers.
Yes.
Right.
And some of them, if you, if you watch school ordinances from other counties, sometimes they have on an agenda item, and say, we're going to make that expulsion, blah, 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 blah. So, you know, we talk to other board members around the state, and we say, we hear all, every single one, they're established.
And again, I'm not interested in changing what we're doing. I think we've, we've got a good thing going, just looking at improving and streamlining and advocating consistency.
I think y'all have the ability to do that because of the size of the district, and most of your larger districts and everything else. A stipulated agreement never comes in front of the board. It's consent, agenda, you know, and done and over with, and, and that's it. And really, the board only hears your, your full-blown contest.
One of my favorite comments was from a Jackson County School Board Member. They were talking amongst themselves, and they said, we don't know how to get those kids to stop bringing those darn guns to school. And they would send them immediately from the regular school to an alternative school. There'd be no break or anything, there was no expulsion, there was no out-of-school, and there was no consequences. And that's why they kept bringing, I mean, I guess they have a real problem with the weapons coming into them. Thank you, thanks for all of the, the work that you did before and the work that you did today. Thank you very much.
Ms. Allagret, before you sit down, actually, you sit down. I, I think this kind of begs the question of, when, when should we do, maybe this is a question more for Mrs. Himmel. When should we do a review with Sermi about our relationship with them as far as sending students, getting students back, going through the transition program, making sure that everything is, is working? Should we have like a review...
We, we had talked to them, and they were trying to get the two nine-weeks under their belt when they had a flow back and forth, so that's kind of where we left it.
Is there going to be any representation on the Code of Conduct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, that would be, the Code of Conduct then, if they're, if they're involved in, in a representation on that, that to me is where that's going to...
I would just say, so you know, we're, we're in communication with them. Ms. Himmel and I, and Mr. Blocker spent some time out there last week with them. So, you know, it's, we're constantly getting that feedback, whether it's attendance, curriculum, staff has been very, working very closely.
And how is everything going?
Our biggest issue is transportation, which is the same issue that we're having trying to find drivers.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big issue.
So when you retire?
I can't work for you for a whole year. I can't do bus drives.
You can work for Sermi, they're not part of that for us.
I have a conversation at least once a day. I go over there once a week for 60 minutes to 90 minutes. Miss Humble is involved with the attendance. I've been there for breakfast for arrival of students, dismissal of students, parents, meeting with them. We really try to have that communication. Right now, they are looking to send between two and four students back to school at the nine-week break. They're having that conversation with the zone school's principal, so that she can share, Ms. Heather can share what she sees, how does the principal feel because they sent the student over there, what expectations they have when they get back. It's a, it's a conversation that they have between the two of them.
And the other day, they called Mr. Rollins, as he knows a certain student out there they have a couple of issues with, so Mr. Rollins went out and met with the grandmother. So, there's lots of communication going on.
Did you see a big difference in the operation?
Yes.
What I'll, what I'll share...
I was out there last week.
We were all there, not at the same time. What I'll, what I'll share, I was just very much amazed by a lot of things. First being, like I said, I wanted to see the arrival, I wanted to see breakfast, I wanted to see lunch. I've not gone through classrooms yet, I just don't want to be disruptive. The entry of the students, the arrival of the students is so calm. Walking by, there'll be, and there's always somebody to greet them, not just the bus driver, somebody at the door, remember to get them, take their hat off. I saw one student come up and say, okay, where's my jumpsuit? I know I'm not in my, my college shirt. And I said, this has happened a lot. In the beginning, it happened several times a day, now it's just one or two students, maybe a week. And there's reasons why that student...
You know, having them put a bubble in their mouth and walking three towels off was a little much. That, no, I'm just kidding.
Breakfast was amazing.
They're called in by classroom, the teacher goes with them. I actually witnessed a teacher defuse the situation. That could have gotten very volatile between the SRO and a teacher and a phone. I was just so impressed with that, so I wound up staying that whole morning. Some of the discipline, I'm not sitting in on, but I'm watching kids walk up. I'm watching the interaction with the staff, the young lady who's still there that struggled last year. Mike Kibesnik was there, called her a different name, and I said, that's not her name. He goes, I know, but I told her that first day of school, she looks like so-and-so. And the way she listened to him and responded, because she was doing something she wouldn't do, very respectful, I'm not saying it wasn't there before, it's just different expectations and...
Old coaches trick.
Yes, and the gray girl specialist, I mean, in my opinion, is the people who are there are very well-trained in what they do.
Interesting.
And Ms. Heather, the principal, anytime I've talked to parents, after they've calmed down a little bit, the majority of them are very complimentary of her, her demeanor. I'm just very impressed so far with what I see, and that their focus is, of course, to change behaviors, but academically, they attend to all middle schools' requirements, the core courses. They're all highly qualified and certified teachers. Each middle school, 20 minutes a day, does a counseling and career component. It involves social skills, anger management, disciplinary skills, so like, I think it's in social skills, they do a career component. I could go on and on, very dismissal of the same thing. Like Mr. Rollins said, that's their biggest challenge right now.
They want, and, you know, one of the, they want kids in school, so acting up doesn't get you sent home. It gets you Saturday school, it gets you work detail, it gets you a lot of things, but it takes a lot to get sent home. So, that's, that's been a helpful addition, I think, because that's, a lot of those kids don't want weeks.
And no in-school suspension? Or as, as we classically in the past ran it?
I think they do have...
They have something, but it's...
Like a bounce room or something, yeah.
I think yesterday they had 106 students enroll.
Oh my gosh.
Their attendance was in last time, last week when we talked, Mike, was like 86, 87%...
Oh my God.
You know, they, they were still not happy with that, thought that they could do better, so...
so...
And the ESE population, they work closely with ESE specialists, like the zone school, it's the consult, consult only, they, they're able to provide those services, so they do have some students over there, but they can't service all that ESE population. Also, Angela Briggs from the centers is there, three full days, two half-days, and she does anger management and substance abuse, not just students who have been sent there in lieu of expulsion, but any kids that they know of that have either an arrest or, or a psych...
They're working more with everybody instead of just those transition students, and that's, that's actually been a nice addition.
Students cannot walk the halls without a pass, there's always somebody outside the hall during transition, it's a calm transition, I mean, you get situations every now and then, but every day, every week, the incidences are smaller and smaller. They're still there because they're working with students to change their behaviors, but always a smile on her face, Mr. Besnik is always there, he works with the parents, and not that that wasn't happening before, they just have some people who have, that are trained in specific areas of their discipline and behavior. And it's, it's, it's some, it's different expectations, like Mr. Rollins said, Saturday school, after-school work detail, parents pick them up after school, those that don't, then they do perform in-school, they really don't want to do the out-of-school stuff.
Well, and in avoiding getting, having them get there, I know Mr. West has been out at the high schools and the middle schools, and, and I know that because I had a parent call me that said, yeah, and they even brought the attorney in to tell my child that they couldn't do stuff, and I said, when did you go to school? And they said, when they did. I said, well, we've always had the attorney, even when you were in high school, go there. I said, don't you remember a larger gentleman by the name of Mr. Fitzpatrick?
We haven't been doing it all that long. Eight years.
No, eight years.
But it was, but Fitzpatrick did it.
Not for very long.
No?
No, we started that, we started that. Because what was happening is when we came up with, when the state came up with more of the serious zero tolerance, and we started to have more of an incident with those other dudes with the brass knuckles and all that, and we're saying, these kids aren't taken as seriously, you go out there, you tone them, you'll scare the Jesus out of them, and that's when he...
I think it did, and, and you, and I understand you talked, and I appreciate it of, of that principals have the ability to make rules, and you need to follow those rules like you would on everything else, and, and that certainly scared this parent, because they were like, well, they, you know, I didn't understand a principal could make rules too. So, so it did a good job. So, thank you. State of the District Part 2.
What, what's, I'm sorry, expectation timelines on this.
Over.
Five, 10 minutes?
Here's the topics that we have today.
See, it's like many, many pages.
Forty-five slides, yes ma'am?
Y'all want me to stay for this or...
We think you need to know.
We'll be a quiz.
No. We'll be a quiz? We'll have an assessment with clickers at the end.
I'll have to type it out.
How about if you want, Ms. Deuchman, if we go, I'd show you the title of the, of the things that we're gonna address, and then you decide, or as if...
Let me, I'm just asking my fellow board members, it's 45 slides, we're gonna be here for two hours, my guess is hour and a half, two hours, yeah, it's 1:00, so, do y'all want to go straight through, or do you want to take a break?
I'm, I'm, I wouldn't mind going straight through, but it's up to you all.
Let's go to ten, like a five-minute break in the history.
Sure. We'll take the five minute.
We'll...
What?
Giving people an opportunity to grab some lunch, can we do a 30-minute drive-through type thing? So grab some...
Staff out there shaking their head, you know, seems to be no, so I don't know, unless, unless there's some of you saying yes or no. I'm looking at the directors and coordinators now. Yeah, there's thumbs up.